All right, so welcome to the November tenth, two thousand and twenty Norfolk Planning Board Meeting. As a preliminary matter, this is Walter Byron, the Planning Board Chair. All members are present. We have Mr. Weddleton, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Peck, and Mr. Searle. And also with us are Rich McCarthy and as our Town Planner and Betsy Fajol, our Administrative Assistant. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for the meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. So that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation, but this meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening via the Zoom application as posted in the town website identifying how the public may join. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care of that, not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. So the first item on our agenda this evening will be for the Select Board to take a vote. Please resume, Mr. Calcutt.
Thanks, Walter. Following our joint executive session, the Select Board Chair moves to adjourn the Select Board Meeting of November tenth, two thousand and twenty. Do I hear a second from the Select Board?
Second.
Hearing a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
C.C. Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Thank you very much and have a wonderful meeting, Planning Board.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye bye. All right, Rich, our first item on the agenda this evening is the ninety-five Holbrook Street Site Plan for construction of a well field and pumping station for the Norfolk Public Water Supply. And I believe we need to read the public me notice into the record, and that would be Mr. Searle.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law Section forty A and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaws Section F eleven. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty at seven P. M. Regarding a site plan application for property located at ninety-five Holbrook Street in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant town of Norfolk Department of Public Works of thirty-three Medway Branch, Norfolk, Massachusetts, has submitted an application for site plan approval for the construction of a well field and pumping station for the Norfolk Public Water Supply. Site work includes underground water and electric infrastructure and access road fencing, standby generator propane fuel source, and a radio antenna tower as depicted on provided plans by environmental partners. The property is located in the C four zoning district, reference assessors map ten, block thirty-two, lot seventy-five. The plan and application are available for public inspection on the town of Norfolk website, www.norfork.nas.us, or call the Planning Board Office to schedule an appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Searle. All right, DPW, I presume, is here this evening. Barry? Thought I saw you earlier.
Yep. Hi, Walter. I'm here.
Okay. All right. Why don't you make your case?
Well, I'll start off and then I'll kick it off to Ryan Allgrove. So as you know, this, the process for the well site has been going on for several years. It was actually brought to our attention late in the game that we had to become before the Planning Board for approval as part of our process. So we presented our information, betaed it a thorough review. We went back and forth with a, if I'm out to partners of beta to answer any questions they have, and we think we have a good package put together to move forward with getting our well site in and our water under construction.
All right. And someone from Environmental Partners wish to speak?
Sure. Hi, my name is Ryan Allgrove. I'm the Project Manager for Environmental Partners. And a little bit of history, if somebody in the planning board in the audience isn't aware, this water supply project, the town's been searching for probably a couple decades for a new water supply. The two existing water supplies are waning in their productivity. There is no redundancy right now. So if one water supply was to go down for some reason, the town could not supply the maximum demands to its residents. So this site was discovered five or six years ago, and we've been kind of in the permitting process with D E P since then until this year. And so, you know, in that respect, it's a, it's a pretty important project to the town, I think, for the, the long term, you know, to meet the long term water needs. Essentially, the project is, it's a well field, so there's six wells with submersible pumps that kind of combine into one pipe that goes through a little treatment building. It's a small twenty foot by thirty foot precast concrete building that adjusts, it has chemical feed systems in it to adjust the pH and add chlorine. And it goes through that building and down a driveway that's about eight hundred feet long and out to Holbrook Street, and we have to do a small extension of the water system like five hundred or six hundred feet on Holbrook Street to connect to the nearest pipe. And from there, it goes right into the system and the, like, as Barry mentioned, you know, the, the schedule of the job was put a little bit on hold here, but you know, that we have a contractor on board and we're ready to start construction once we get through this process.
All right, now we've submitted this to peer review and we know that Beta has given us a peer review. We know that you and your group have responded. And then again, late this afternoon, Beta has come back with clarification around the remaining issues from your response.
Yep.
So I've read that and we probably ought to have Phil just speak to that quickly. Phil from Beta, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. My, we, as you are correct in saying that we had a couple rounds of reviews, we had a mutual tech meeting last week on this. There are just a few items that are probably not going to change the, the plan substantially. But just want to clarify some, some stormwater issues that certainly can be conditioned if you, if you so desire, but I think we're, we're very close. There are a number of waivers that we would expect not, not significant, not based on the the use of the site and but there are five waivers that they're requesting. So I think the Board should discuss those, but generally, I don't think it's anything that would adversely impact the, the neighborhood or residents, but.
It's a, to, I guess, piggyback on what Phil said, the use of the site. You know, it's a water supply site. It's, it's not a twenty-four hour manned facility. It's something that water department personnel will visit once a day to take their water samples and kind of check on things. But besides that, there may be, you know, there'll be a chemical delivery, maybe once every three or four months or something like that.
Right.
And so besides that, you know, the, the daily use of the site is very minimal.
And we had a good meeting on site the other day too with several at Butters. We addressed their concerns about where the generator was going to be located. We are installing a tenner for the SCADA system. It's strictly for the town and run the water system. It's not a antenna that's going to be for Verizon or anybody else. So we addressed that with the Butters. All in all, we had a really good meeting and everybody was pretty pleased with the project that we're putting forward.
A moment ago, Phil mentioned that the the DPW is asking for five waivers. I'll read them from Phil's latest letter that he transmitted this afternoon. Waiver one, traffic congestion and control analysis. Waiver two, lighting around the perimeter of the parking lot. Waiver three, requirement from, for an oil water separator and dry well. Waiver four, traffic study and requirements for a twenty-four hour and peak hour traffic volume, and waiver five, requirements for secondary street. So any questions by Board members on any of those?
Why was there discussion for the driveway to be upgraded to the requirements of a secondary street?
Barry, maybe you can answer that?
Yeah, I believe it was just part of the standard beta review of a subdivision. So when they did an analysis, I think, no, basically, they're comparing what they typically compare for subdivision, not realizing that we're putting on twelve foot access driveway, not a, not a real street.
Under the site plan permit requirement, the driveway is supposed to be built to secondary road standards, so that's, that's a requirement in your, in your regulations.
So in this case, it's basically, we're going to have our, our water staff going down there once a day. You know, deliveries every couple months. So that's why we're asking for that waiver.
And there's a bar gate at the entrance, so you really can't drive up the driveway unless you have a, have a key to the padlock, which should be the Water Department and the Fire Department.
I understand we have a Fire Department letter that says that they can get their vehicles in and out in an emergency. Is that true?
That's true.
Yep.
Okay.
Did you want, Walter, did you want to have Ryan screen share and put just the site plan on as you go to the audience?
Yeah, good idea, good idea. Sure, please put that up there.
All right. Just got to give him permission. Where is he? All right, should have it now.
Okay. Hopefully, everybody, everybody can see that.
Yep.
Okay, I'll go. Basically, we're, we're right on the town line, so the here, here's the site.
Yeah.
The driveway and the, and the building and the town line is obviously, you can see Millis Norfolk, so we're basically, our entrance is the last parcel in Norfolk. So I can run through quick.
Ryan, let me, let me jump in real quick. This is Aaron, just because my comments, I think you could address as you're moving forward here. So I, you know, some of the waiver requests are for the Design Review Board and trees and stuff like that. So you know, given that this isn't a small driveway and it's in between existing houses and it's, you know, in a fairly undeveloped area of land, you know, can you speak to earth removal and what kind of trees will be cut down and what kind of trees might be replaced?
Okay, yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a very fairly flat site. So the removal is less than five hundred cubic yards. I think we calculated four hundred and seventy-seven. And there's no tree clearing to speak of. I think we're going to widen the access here. There's, there's no significant trees at the entrance here. It's kind of more like brush clearing. So there's no plan to replace any trees. Like I said, we're not clearing any of the the, the tree line on the back of the lot is kind of up against the end of the driveway here. So any, all of our grading is limited to that tree line.
Yeah, Aaron, this is pretty much a wide open field, so it's actually, we're not going to be affecting any trees or any vegetation like that.
Yeah, I'm looking at it on Google Maps and I think that was just important to get into the, the public meeting that, you know, it's in an open all of what's being constructed is essentially being done in an open field.
Correct, yeah, it's, it's, it's been a hayfield for who knows how long.
How wide is the road that you have?
It's twelve feet wide, a paved road with two foot gravel shoulders on either side.
And just, just a point of reference, the, the principal reason why they're paving is because to, just to comply with the Norfolk zoning bylaws. They originally started the, there wasn't necessarily an intent to pave the road, but there wasn't a way to not have to pave it to comply with the bylaws. So in part, that's why they're paving, be honest about it.
And in the winter, you need to plow it?
Yes, well, we, we maintain it. It's basically our last on our list to maintain during a, a snow event. So our, our water guys will go in and plow those.
Okay.
We can't salt it due to D E P regulations, so we actually just plow them and sand them a little bit.
Okay.
What size vehicles would be going in there for deliveries?
Um, sometimes we, I, there'll be six wheelers and depending upon the chemical deliveries that we're looking at, the bulk loads, it could be a tractor trailer.
And the biggest equipment is a fire truck or the tractor trailer?
I think the, the longest wheelbase would be the, the tractor trailer.
Trailer. And then that's all dependent on how we do our deliveries. We could do them by tank or we could do it by bulk, which that would, will be pumped in.
So it sounds like the tanker, once he gets in there, he can back around and get out, right?
Yeah, it's very similar to our existing layouts of our pump stations. Pretty much the driveway with an open area with the vehicle could turn around.
Yep.
And did you say that the Fire Department, the Fire Chief had already looked at, at the plan?
Yeah, we had a pre-construction meeting with the chief before we started this project. He was fine with the layout. He just actually, his comment was, he wanted us to keep everything as consistent as we can to our existing stations. So the fire, fire personnel would have an understanding of how it all operates.
And is there, there's no lighting around the, you're asking for a waiver around the parking lot for lighting. Is there lighting on the drive?
No, though, I don't think there's going to be any lighting on the drive, just on the building itself.
Okay.
Barry, given
Will, Will, I'm sorry, Aaron, go ahead.
Given the nature of, you know, it being a well site and not a high trafficked road, it, is there value in looking at a, a more permeable road surface or is asphalt actually, does there some benefit to it for you?
Yeah, there's actually a benefit to the asphalt. One of our, our Gold Street well, for a while, we had a more of a gravel base. When it rains, it gets wet, the tractor trailer is kind of digging into it. So we're not putting a super thick layer of asphalt in here. It's pretty much just enough for us to get vehicles in and out and maintain it. It actually costs us more money, you know, over time to try to maintain a gravel dirt road. So this is actually a better solution for us.
Yeah, and I guess it, it's also important to note that this design, you know, the site, the building, and everything about it was, you know, reviewed by D E P. And, you know, because they're concerned especially about what's going on inside the Zone One wellhead protection area and, and they were, they were, they're okay with the way this is laid out.
What, Barry, what signage is going to be at the street?
Um, probably nothing, probably pretty much. I think that's some of our existing, we have like no trespassing town property. Gold Street, there is no signage. The Spruce Well, well, has a little bit more signage because it's in a more populated area. Oh, I think it's something we could think about, but it's kind of one of those things out of sight, out of mind. I really don't want to have a lot of signs there to attract everybody's attention to it, but it's something we can, we can think about.
And, and the entrance is just blocked a short distance in from the road?
You know, there'll be a gate across it.
Yeah, there's a gate right, right here, I guess, if you can see where I'm circling.
Yep.
Signs, signs like water supply restricted area, stuff like that is, you know, typically
It's pretty common. Actually, our, both of our existing well sites are used as walking trails. We get a lot of pedestrian people walking, especially the Gold Street well. As long as, you know, as long as people aren't vandalizing anything, we haven't had a problem.
As long as people aren't using it with horses, that's what D E P cares about. They don't like that.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's time, I think it's time to move. I'm cutting you off again, Walter, sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
I could see a sign that's, that says water supply, something like that, yeah. All right, Aaron, go ahead, please, if you
I was gonna say, I think it's time to move forward with this one, Walter.
Yeah, so my question to, to Barry is, what action are you asking the Board for tonight?
Well, we're asking for you to approve this so we can get going with the construction of the, the project.
Well, in order to approve it, we would need a site plan decision, which Rich would craft. And that is not available this evening and would be probably available to us at our next meeting. At which point we would read it, correct it and approve it and then sign it subsequent to the, to the meeting usually. And that's another month in the future.
So it's just a nuance to it. I think there would look, yes, that would be part of it, but for this, for this evening is a conditional approval list, at least be able to start the site work aspect of it, which was the, the water line in Holbrook Street and the start, the driveway in between, between now and the next meeting. We would follow up with the, the written document.
Yeah, thanks, Rich. You got, you got the better language. I didn't have that at the tip of my tongue. So we did contract, we contacted the contract today. They'd like to mobilize tomorrow to be able to put out their silt fence. And then we'd like to start the road work as soon as we could on Monday. That will be coordinated with Norfolk and Millis and we'll start the roadway project. We need to store the pipe materials on site. So then we can start with that. Once we finish the road portion of the project, we'd head into the site.
All right, so
You need to ask for public
Public comment.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. So anyone in the audience care to make comment or ask a question? Yes, go ahead. You've raised your hand. Go ahead.
Yep, I am a direct butter. I just have a question. I'm
Can you identify yourself, please?
My name's Teresa Knowles. I, I'm a direct butter to this, a butter.
Yep.
I'm really curious. This letter for this meeting is the absolute first thing I have gotten on this, and the only reason I know about it is because I happen to work in the town hall. How come I have not gotten any letters? None? Zero.
Good point.
I would have, I don't know. I'm curious. That's all I
Well, let's see, let's see.
I'm all for it and everything.
No, I understand. Let me try to, let me try to come up with an answer, I think. And, and that is, as you may have heard earlier, Barry said that it was a surprise, if you will, that this required a site plan approval. And so the site plan approval is something that requires a public hearing. And once a public hearing is announced, then let us go out to the Butters. So this process, you, you've got a letter in, in, in sync with the current process. The, the issue is that the, the process should have been done some months ago and DPW didn't realize they needed it. So that's the explanation.
Yeah, I think there was
You've already done, Barry, I mean, you've already done a lot of work out there. I mean,
Yep, yep. Your point, we, we've kind of inherited this one. This has been going on for, everybody knows, quite a while. And, you know, there was a little, a few nuances here and there that we weren't quite aware of because we, I pretty much got involved in this late in the game. So I'm sure if we, if we had been involved sooner, it probably would have been a smoother processes, but we're here now and we're trying to get it accomplished.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I don't lose out on anything else because I am, my house is right behind there. So
Okay.
And also, just, just to follow up on the, the, there has been activity out there, the, the drillers and things. So that, that was kind of the first, you know, we wouldn't design and get a contractor to build the building. We had to do a lot of testing on the wells themselves. Sure that, that's all the activity that's been going on for, you know, the last year, you know, couple of years is
Yeah, I, I get that. I used to work at the DPW when you very first started this, so I just thought it was a little strange, but now we know, that's fine. No problem.
Okay, all right, so we, anyone else in the audience care to ask a question or?
Yeah, if I could, this is, I'm sorry, my camera's not on, but this is Brooks and Nida Johnson. We live in thirty-three Turner Street in Millis, so this is, we're on the other side of Teresa, but this is like do we have any concerns? Because I know we have our well, we have our septic. I, I guess I'm just wondering if, you know, there's a lot of, you know, that's going in between existing homes that already have well and septic and I'm just wondering if there's any concerns there, if that's anything we should be and like Teresa, we're kind of like been waiting forever to find out what was going on.
Sure, okay. Brooks, Ryan can address it for you. I can tell you, there was extensive studies and groundwater tests and myriads and myriads of things done out there to make sure that this site wouldn't affect any of the residents around us or we wouldn't get contaminated by any, any of the things around us, but Ryan can speak to that a little bit more than I can.
Right, so we, we did a, you know, a, a long-term pumping test, so we pumped this well as hard as we're going to pump it for five days. I think it actually extended out to seven days and we had monitoring wells at the perimeter, basically, of the property. So we're monitoring what happens to the groundwater. So for that reason, so Mass D E P takes a look at all that data and, you know, six months later comes back and tells us whether or not they're okay with the plan. And, you know, they had no issues with any of the receptors around the property. I know, I think one thing that maybe we have going for us is that since this is a well field, the, the draw of water is a little shallower than a, a deep well, for example. So the, the Zone One radius protection area is two hundred and fifty feet from the wells. Whereas if you had a deep well, it would be four hundred feet out, which kind of signifies that maybe the influence would be stretched a little further. So that, you know, that plays into it as well. But, you know, like I said, D E P takes into account all those concerns that you had when they review the, you know, two hundred page document that we submitted to them about eighteen months ago.
I have one more question. How, how long do you think all this is going to take to do the road, the building and all that?
We're, we're hoping to be up and running by the spring.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, there'll be a lot of site work action for the next, you know, between now and Christmas Day or whenever the weather turns. And then the, the building and kind of finish work stuff will resume in the spring. The idea is to have the well online for summer demands next year.
Great.
All right. Hello, yes?
Yes, my name is Richard Wallace. I'm at thirty-two Turner Street in Millis. My house is directly across from this access road going in. The one question I have would be, you know, Barry, you had said that you had met with some of Butters out there. Your comment on that was the first, we've, we've heard of that because I would have loved to have been at that meeting.
Yeah, that was, that was actually organized, a group of people in the Pin Oaks area actually reached out to the Planning Board. DPW, so we actually met on, on site, what was it, two, Monday, I believe.
Okay, the only other question I have is what kind of precautions are inside this building to prevent these chemicals that you're using from getting back down into that aquifer? As that's a big concern.
That there's check valves in place on all the piping. We actually have a whole, the building itself is a precast building. It's going to have its own self-containment for spills and then storage of the chemicals. Ryan can speak a little bit more about the technical side of it than I can.
Yeah, so basically, Mass D E P requires that for every, you know, gallon that you have stored of chemical, you have to have a hundred and ten percent of that volume in secondary containment. So there's a, basically, all the chemicals are sitting in a big basin with a flood switch on it. So if anything happened to leak, it would trip an alarm. And, you know, basically, the DPW would know within minutes if there was ever a leak. And like I said, the, the secondary containment is a hundred and ten percent of the actual volume of chemical that we're allowed to have in the building.
Okay, and as part of that too, our, our SCADA system, that's why it's so key. It actually monitors, monitors how much chemicals. So basically, we'll be using chlorine in here to treat and a few other things, and the SCADA systems monitors what's getting into the, the finished water. So we, we have complete control of what's going on over there.
And could you tell me one last thing? Exactly where is the water line going to be leaving Holbrook Street and entering the property?
It's going to be coming right out of Margot Way. It's going to go right up the, so if you're coming up, up Holbrook Street, like you're going towards Millis, it'd be up the left side. Right up the gutter line. We will be repaving that road when we're, when we're complete with the project. So we'll do all the pipe Right up the gutter line. We will be repaving that road when we're, when we're complete with the project. So we'll do all the pipe work this year. Let the road settle for a little while. We'll be coming back probably next fall and put a finish coat of asphalt on.
And where boats is it going to, is it going to follow the road in or?
More or less spread up the center of the driveway.
Okay. That wasn't on the plan. The electric line was marked, but the water line wasn't.
Water, we, we get a little wiggle room with it when we're, when we're going to put it in. If Ryan drew it in a straight line, I probably wouldn't put it in that way. So, so we, we have to, we have to wiggle around a little bit with that.
Okay.
Um, this is Janet Loop. I live at 32 Turner as well. My question is, since we're technically in Millis, if something happens, are we going to be notified?
As in, as in.
As in the butter, would we?
No, I mean, like what would happen? Really? Nothing should happen at this site.
No, but you've got this whole issue in Millis with the PFAS and the DeAndalus well.
We've already tested this well site. That was one of the first things that we did and this site came back clean for PFAS.
Okay. But just if something were to happen in 20 years or so, would we be notified only because technically we're not in Norfolk?
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure you would. By that time, I mean, basically, you know, everything is controlled by DEP. So all the testing, everything that we do is controlled by DEP. So we'd have to notify everybody accordingly.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty typical. There's a lot of water systems that have customers in the next town over and it's if, if you're on the public water system. Yeah, they, there is very strict public notification requirements for contamination issues like you're talking about.
But we're not on the public system. We're all on our own wells. So if something's wrong with the aquifer, that means something's wrong with ours as well. Right?
Yeah, no, that's true.
You would probably know sooner than we would.
Okay.
You know, our volumes are greater than yours. If you had a bad taste or a smell or something, you'd probably know sooner than we would.
Okay. So we call you.
Let us know.
All right, we're being asked for a conditional approval. And I think we should take a, a vote on that to allow them to begin their site preparation work while we, while Rich constructs the site approval document for next meeting. So the chair will entertain a motion for conditional approval to allow site preparation work to begin.
So moved.
Wait a second.
Second.
All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Weddleton.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, Barry, and you're, you're off and running.
Thank you, Walter. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, looking at our agenda, the next item on the agenda is Alexander State subdivision. Status of completion and request for bond reduction. Do we have Mr. Bonvy with us tonight?
We have. Yep, via telephone.
Via telephone. Okay, good. Sure. Okay. So Rich, give us an update on, on completion for starters, and then we'll entertain the bond reduction question.
Sure. And Barry's still there at the moment, too.
I'll stick around to help you out, Rich.
So we, we passed the finish line. The Frederickson Road was paved last Friday. Mother Nature is taking care of us in a sense to be, it was a beautiful day. So that is done. Oakview Terrace, Oakview Road, Oakview Trail, sorry. It was already paved several weeks ago. So the, the paving work is done. Was inspected by the DPW, was done to satisfaction of the DPW department. The trees, as you know, were put in quite some time ago and Mr. Baum is looking for partial release on half the trees. So we're still holding back money on the trees. You're looking for full release on the top coated pavement. And then also the granite around the catch base in which I sent off in between to the board through DPW, the recommendation was to remove that granite behind the back of the catch base and then just wrap it around with an asphalt burn, which the, I did hear at least interim, in the interim from the board seemed acceptable. And I think it was a good recommendation from DPW. And we've reached this point. The next point after that would be to, to work on finishing up the remaining punch list items and work towards getting the road accepted next year. As a, both roads as municipal roads. And that's, I know that Mr. Koppelman is on, I know we do need to square away. Unfortunately, the paver was parking some equipment on his driveway while paving Oakview Terrace. And I know I talked to Mr. Baum earlier in the day that you do remediate that, those discussions between Mr. Koppelman and A1 paving. I think it's it's more not a functional issue. It's more of an aesthetic. At this point, there was some staining that would happen from the equipment being on the driveway, but other than that, as far as I know, everything's going well.
Mr. Koppelman, you wish to speak to that point?
Um, yeah, I think what Rich said was correct. Again, Jeff Koppelman, 14 Oakview Trail. Yeah, as the, as Oakview Trail was being paved, A1 had left some equipment on our driveway that unfortunately left significant stains. They have claimed it's just surface and rust stains. It's been several weeks. It doesn't appear to be going away. So I just ask that. You know, that this gets, you know, resolved by Mr. Bonvy as it was his contractor. So in, in a short period of time.
Okay, thank you for that. All right. Questions from the board? Hearing none. Mr. Bonvy, you wish to make any comment?
I have none, other than to say that I've finished the work and I think it's pretty clear and you're, you're holding considerable amount of money. There's 25% contingency over $20,000 just in contingency dollars. I've planted all the trees and all the shrubs. I'm only asking for 50%, which by the way, were planted over a year ago. Actually more than that over a year ago. So I think that, now two things. I finished the work that was, that I, that I said I would finish this year. And also I think the, I know the board's in a very, very, very secure position with the money remaining. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. One other small point that we kicked around last meeting, I believe, is the business of people cutting through from over the, the center of the circle there. And there was talk about some sort of barrier, temporary barrier that the fire department could remove if they needed to. Where do we stand with that, Rich?
So Mr. Baum has committed to that barrier in if needed. I think the, I thought was at least now that the finished paving is done, the landscaping is going in, it's actually a sidewalk now connecting between the cul-de-sacs that perhaps the, the drivers who aren't as astute what's a road or not would figure things out. And we wouldn't necessarily need a barrier. So we wanted to see how things go. But if it ultimately needed to be done, he committed to do it because it's a, it's a balance between providing a barrier, but not I don't know, overdoing it, so to speak, that it looks more, you know, I guess more than necessary for you know, the end of a cul-de-sac. So.
Rich and I had a few discussions in the field. There is a, there is a hydrant each other, the cul-de-sac. There shouldn't be a reason why the fire department would ever have to go through there. It was kind of my idea to Rich to kind of let and see how it works out for a while. We were actually, you know, spitballing, maybe putting some, just a couple of wooden posts or something like that, something a little bit more aesthetic out there. But the idea was just kind of wait and see to see what happens with vehicles. I know it's typically what I hear it all over town. It's the UPS and the FedEx guys. They like taking shortcuts. I see it everywhere and that's a complaint I get all the time. Hopefully with it, once it gets loomed and seeded and everything, it's going to be obvious that it's not something you should drive through.
Walter, Walter, I was out there yesterday and I looked at it and you know, you got the sidewalk is clear as day now, which is nice and and it's paved like a sidewalk. So it, it looks like a sidewalk, not a, not a road or an access road. Plus next to it, there seems to be, you know, some sort of a swale connecting the drainage between the two cul-de-sacs. So I would be inclined to wait and see.
Okay, understood. Any, any other comments from board members on that topic? Okay, then.
I'm sorry, Betsy provided the math for you, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I see that. And we're being asked to reduce the, the bond from present 103,363 and 86 cents to 67,602 and 77 cents. So the chair will entertain a motion to that effect.
Walter, what's still outstanding?
Rich, go ahead with the, the list.
So what's outstanding, he, Mr. Baum, we'll have to come back, do some loman seating between the back of sidewalk and the burn. And then touch up alongside the sidewalk, loman seating between the two cul-de-sacs. There's some monuments that need to be put in yet. And then we do need to get the trail markings put in to the open space, which needs to be done. Those are really, there might be a little bit of cleanup work as we get closer to, although he did clean up work before in the basins, but that's really the extent of it. And just make sure everything holds up the, the trees.
And if I can interject, the amount of money you're holding for that work is in excess of like $50,000.
Yep. I think we ought to put on that list also the cleanup of the driveway for Mr. Koppelman.
Wasn't happy to agree.
Okay.
When this bond was recalculated, didn't they lower the contingency fee based on the remaining outstanding issues? The contingency.
I didn't. At all. The contingency was from day one, 20,672, 77.
Normally that's lowed as your, as your bond outstanding amount goes down. That's based on the remaining bond. So actually I believe you do a bigger release.
I, I didn't want to be too aggressive and not, you know, beggars can't be, I didn't want to go too aggressive. That's all.
No, it doesn't work, doesn't work, doesn't work that way. If you've got $40,000 left to do, the contingency shouldn't be 50%.
I think you're correct, but again, I wasn't going to overstep my bounds.
Well, Betsy, you want to do the math and give us a new number?
You got it.
Walter, wouldn't it be beneficial for us to just move forward with what was requested this evening? Move on.
Well, if, if it just takes another minute to come up with a lower figure, I'm willing to wait.
Then we have to discuss how we came up with that figure and if it's sufficient to come up with other things. Make the list for what it covers.
Well, I think being, being fair to the, to the gentleman, John's point is, is correct that he's, he's due more contingency reduction. The, the items that remain on the list and the value of those items remain unchanged. It's just a contingency that's under question.
So without the cleanup to Mr. Koppelman's driveway, 58,257, 50 cents.
That's, Betsy, is that before the 25% contingency or that includes the 25% contingency?
That includes 25% contingency.
All right. So the chair will entertain a motion to reduce the Alexander State subdivision bond from 103,363 and 86 cents to 58,257 dollars and 50 cents.
Walter, can we get DPW's comments on this?
Certainly.
I, as long as there's enough money in there to, for us to accomplish what we need to do, we should be fine. That's, that is one of the headaches we've been running into lately, where we've shorted ourselves on, on bond and haven't had any money left to do any finish work if Mr. Baum decides to walk away. Just be cautious of that.
Well, listed what Rich listed has amounts against each of those items. The total what, about 40 some odd thousand dollars?
If I can interject, if I may, the, all the trees have been planted and I've only asked for 50%. So you can also look at that. So there's still substantial amount of money that I didn't request simply because I didn't want to overask.
Yeah. That's fair.
So again, I'd say without taking the time to go and do all the math to what was left and given the concerns of DPW, why don't we just stick with the number that's presented before us on the agenda?
Gary, how do you feel?
I will vote for either of the two reductions that I've heard earlier. I trust Betsy's calculation and I think there's sufficient money in there to get us over the finish line.
Chad?
I would go with Betsy's calculation.
John? Okay, so the consensus is that we can go with Betsy's number. All right, do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor for reducing the bond to 58,257 and 50 cents? Say aye, Mr. Weddleton.
Aye.
Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, Mr. Bonvy, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, next item of business is B1 zoning study discussion. With Rich leading the discussion. Go ahead, Rich.
Well, I, I just want to introduce, I do have Josh Fial along with us tonight.
I see Josh, right?
We did send, put together a slide, a series of recommendations relative to the B1 work. Essentially, what we're going to present and hopefully just agreement by the planning board is where we've kind of arrived from the B1 process through the committee is there's been a lot of good exploration, a lot of good ideas that have been explored. There's been a good analysis. But we've landed to where we need to kind of craft the actual language specifically to some of those changes. So instead of running them through the B1 and then coming back to the planning board, the thought being from this point forward to run them through the planning board, get the planning board's feedback on them, what changes need to be made or not made. Work towards a, a series of recommendations. The B1 committee members can still participate, but it'd be through the planning board process at this point. Not running it specifically through the B1 committee. The B1 committee would still exist. It doesn't necessarily have to be disbanded at this point. But from this aspect of the project, the idea would be to get the planning board's feedback. So that way we can at least move forward, hopefully have some consensus. And then if consensus is reached, have public meetings with the different boards, particularly the ones that were all members to the B1 committee as well as the Affordable Housing Trust to discuss the purpose, the intent, the rationale. And those meetings could be scheduled over the early, you know, after the, the language was hashed out. Hopefully arriving at consensus. And then there could be a additional series of publicly, all the means are public. However, there could be specific public meetings that might be a special meeting for the public as a whole to, to weigh in at some point down the line. But instead of trying to bounce back and forth between the committee and the planning board, and then even bounce back and forth between other boards and committees. I think we have an idea what we need to potential look at to do and let's kind of move in that direction and then you know, see where we go. And so having that, I'm going to, maybe I'll, you want me to do the slideshow? I should share the screen with you, Josh, if you want to run through your slides.
Yeah, I can go ahead and share it if you want to give me that ability.
All right, I'll do that. And, and as Josh is getting ready to share the screen, the thought is still in line with the, the last recommendations from the planning board meeting in October is really some short term objectives relative to zoning. objectives relative to zoning changes and things that should give consideration to for changes, but maybe on a longer term schedule. And that when I say longer term, it could be, you know, a year. So it could be, you know, next fall of this year or thereafter, not as critical, but I think through the process, we've identified some things that are worth consideration to making changes to. So with that, I'll say wait to Josh.
Great, thank you, Rich. Good evening, planning board, good to see you all again. So we just wanted to provide a summary on where Rich and I have reflected on all of the B1 discussion, your discussion in the planning board last meeting. And put together what we think is, is a set of recommendations which are current and reflect all of the discussion which has been occurring over the past year or more. So this is just diving right into them. And what we anticipated, Rich and I was presenting these very briefly this evening and then having the ability to discuss with you in more detail, perhaps over the coming meetings on the planning board agenda. So we don't anticipate this being fully resolved this evening, but wanted to give a starting point. So these would be changes that apply to the B1 inner core. And we would suggest leaving the building scale at fifteen thousand square feet maximum building footprint. So just as it is today, that was something we had considered changing before. But in light of the discussion and our additional analysis over the summer, we think that that's just fine how it is. The building height, we, we recommend after reflection and discussion over all those months with the B1 committee, that we retain the three-story maximum height. So that would be a compromised position from where MAPC's recommendations were previously, except add the flexibility of the additional height measured by feet. So that a developer would have the ability to design that three stories however they might see fit, maybe with an additional, some additional height on the ground floor space. But that would be capped out at three stories as it is today in the current zoning. The residential density, we think is, is the most critical characteristic of the zoning and that we recommend, which is, which was our previous recommendation, to change that from sixteen bedrooms per property to sixteen units per acre. We've been relatively consistent about that. The residential parking, I think, has also been something that perhaps MAPC's recommendations pushed a little too far and, and we think that there's some compromise there as well. So leave the residential parking requirement at what it is today, the one point five per unit, one point five spaces per unit, that is not a change. But then on the shared parking, we do recommend a modest sort of compromise change. So today you have the ability to up to thirty percent to not build those parking spaces, but yet you have to reserve the space on the site for them. We recommend splitting the difference there and letting, if, if warranted and the developer can prove that shared parking would work with their development program, that they could eliminate up to fifteen percent and not reserve that space on the site for it, which would give a little more flexibility in terms of the parking on the site. In terms of affordable housing, I think we had previously recommended fifteen percent included in the affordable housing requirement. And we're recommending no change at this point, to leave that at ten percent as it is today. We, as you all know, we went around a lot about how to potentially change language around the mixed use requirement and a ratio between residential and commercial. And, and we think, given the confusion there was around the recommendations that we were attempting previously, that the, the current language does provide the town the protections that it does need and the, the planning board has interpreted, interpreting it, I think, as, as appropriate with the projects you've had before you. So note, just leave the language around the mixed use requirements and the ratio of residential and commercial as it is today. Change the setback to match the build-to distance between six and nineteen feet. The setback today is zero. So that's really just a clarification to make those two characteristics match each other. Increase bike parking, this is a, a sort of a modest change which a developer should be able to comply to with relatively easily. But that helps to encourage residents which live nearby to bike into the town center to do the things they'd like to do rather than drive. And then adding a use which may not seem too great in our current COVID climate, but a shared work facility at some point, we imagine, will, will come back as a, as a use which is, could be one of those viable commercial ground floor spaces in the shared work facility. Then these are the last five. So additional uses to add as well, a wellness dance exercise, an aerobic studio and a martial arts studio, which could also add some more flexibility to provide tenants for ground floor spaces. And then to prohibit limited used, limited used motor vehicle sales, which are not consistent with the character that the town's seeking. And then another way to add a little bit more flexibility on the parking requirements would be to allow accessible spaces to count toward the required amount of spaces, which isn't the case today. We have on the following slide, a recommendation for revised inner core boundary to which these recommendations would apply. And we think that represents a responsive position as well, where we've been listening to what we've been hearing and it provides additional protections to the town center. And then amending the site plan by law to include the design guidelines, which would just strengthen the position of those, position of the guidelines which have already been adopted by the board. So this is the revised inner core boundary, which we think is, is a practical approach to the recommendations I just outlined. So it would remove the properties which are already developed on Meeting House Road, would remove the municipal properties. And this is the, the new boundary is the red outline that we've struck on this current zoning map. It would, it would pull in the core from those properties which have frontage or, yeah, some frontage on Boardman Street. And then it would pull the core, expand the core slightly down Main Street to the east to include some of the viable mixed use properties there. So we think this is, is a, a good representation of what the core looks like today and would, would be responsive to comments we've heard along the way. So this would be, all of the recommendations that I've just outlined would apply to that area within the new red boundary. And then we, we're on the fence about a few others and would put them forward for also consideration by the planning board. But potentially prohibiting gas stations also as a use. But Rich and I were contemplating that one back and forth and didn't, didn't come to a concrete decision. There's also a suggestion, which we've suggested previously, but that it may, may not be critical if, if the board thinks it's too much. And that's just removing references to the PMLD, which would, would streamline the overall bylaw a, a fair amount and, and reduce some confusion, I believe. We've had some discussion in the B1 about the cupola height or height of cupola and other similar sort of higher extrusions of architectural expression. That, that might be a little too high, that may, they may be true. I don't think it's likely that you're going to get too many features that stretch up to eighty feet, but that, that could be brought down some. And then to clarify that there can be more than one building on a lot. So those are all optional things that could, could add to those fifteen I outlined previously. Of course, all, all of these are open for discussion and, and consideration by the planning board, but we thought we, we would try to give you a very specific and solid starting point.
Outside of the red line on your image, that, that right there? So the brown that is on the outside of the red line just has the current bylaws in place?
The, so outside of the red line, that's a good.
But it's still brown, the original B1 that is outside of your red line.
Yes, outside of the red line would actually convert to the B1 outer dis- sub-district.
It will become light brown?
Yes.
Okay. And most of that is already developed, perhaps with the, is it, is most of it already developed?
Most of it is already developed, except for if you, if you're considering redevelopment potentially, the parcels which would be switched to outer core on Rockwood Road and those on Boardman Street. But those, they're currently developed as single-family homes.
Okay.
Why, why did, why did the red line not go all the way up to Meeting House? There's a piece of undeveloped property there, outside the current red line, but inside Meeting House.
So the, so on me, so Meeting House, we included the parcel that abuts, that abuts the, excuse me, the Stop and Shop lot. But then just outside that red line is where the condominium's property boundary is to the.
Okay, all right.
Walter, are you talking about that empty lot next to the cell tower?
No, I was trying to, I was trying to.
Rich, put your mouse on the, on the. Josh driving.
That's it, yeah, that's that chunk of land right there.
It's developed now, Walter.
Yeah, okay, all right.
The condominiums are there.
That's just a question, all right.
Yep.
But while we're talking about boundaries, the two properties to the plan right of the further, furthest right edge of the boundary should be considered, the two that span the pond. Take the boundary right, right to the new development there, I'm blanking on the name right now.
Yeah, those, those three properties, one of which you've drawn inside and two out, they're all private homes at the moment, are they not? Yeah, okay. You mentioned design guidelines. Weren't the design guidelines drawn around different requirements? The revisions that you've come up with or the compromises that you've come up with, would they not require you go back and tweak the design guidelines?
They, yeah, they will.
But that's, that's very, very astute. I think that most of the diagrams in that document did reflect a three and a half story. So if, if this set of recommendations is something that the planning board would like to pursue, then I think we would want to revise those diagrams. I think the content effectively remains as it's written, but the diagrams themselves would want to be updated.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
If I might interject here, before we get into the details of what was presented, might be a good idea to talk about the concept of what Rich presented and whether we think it's a good approach to go forward with. I'd be interested to hear the board's thoughts on the, the path presented for going forward.
My opinion is that it doesn't, going back a couple of years where this all started, it was to offer something in between 40B and our current requirements. So that developers wouldn't want to cash out and go 40B. This was to be more appealing. I think we were, we were giving them something more appealing, but unfortunately, when we got the other board members involved, people from different boards and the, it seemed like the consensus was that the town would not vote for it no matter how we engage the town and how we try to tell them what we were doing. So now it seems like you've compromised the bigger plan that may have been more appealing to developers and we're taking a few steps back to make it more appealing to the townspeople because they might not understand all the things that can go wrong. It's my opinion from what I just heard.
Well, it seems to me that one, one thing that was not mentioned, or two things that were not mentioned in, in the short term, one is to pursue, which, which Rich is vigorously, the sewer expansion. And the other is, to your point, Gary, pursuing a 40R development with some developer who's willing to, to work with you. Maybe on the Stop and Shop property or one of the, one or two of the other properties.
So that's on the other slide possession, but that is part of the overall, I should have framed a little bit larger picture. So it's, yeah, the, the, the approach would be, so the B1 work that we're talking about principally be run through the planning board, not principally, it would be, would be one help as to the zoning changes. The 40R would continue outward to work with property owners to give consideration if they wanted to do a 40R. But that also would go through the planning board as well if there's somebody that had, does have an appetite to bring that to the board. The sewer would be going through the planning board as well as a select board in a larger group. So essentially the shift is, in that sense, is really directed more towards the planning board to deal with the long-range planning, short-range planning. And then what's not on this slide, I'll do another slide, but as it relates to the longer goal of a new updated master plan, that's, that's a companion to it all. That would be going along as well as we're, we're proceeding down the, going forward. But the master plan, the master plan process, you know, we need to kind of vet that out. So for example, it might run through the planning board, it could be a master plan committee or whatever. So the actual who would, we still need to work as far as talk that through, what would be the best approach. But so that would, so again, that would be starting to move forward as well.
Same thing with the open space recreation plan and the housing production plan.
Yeah, well, last time, last time the master plan was a subcommittee sponsored by the planning board and reporting to the planning board.
So I think we want to get good participation. We don't want to go too beyond form or substance with that. So we'll definitely, we need to talk that through. I think just to kind of put some parameters with, the master plan is probably, you know, for the, for our size community, a hundred and ten, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar endeavor. What we're trying to do is break it down into financial parts that are manageable to the town. One, what Aaron mentioned, I had discussions with the consultant that did the housing production plan. The work through that would, would funnel into the master plan. Same thing with the open space and recreation plan. There are some, as Josh said, there's DLTA technical assistance money that's available for help with master planning efforts. There also is a community compact money that the town can apply for as well to help with the master plan. And the last piece, which we would like to see if we can maybe try to minimize it for successful, all the other pockets, pocket, pockets, excuse me, would be town funding to make up the gap that we need to make up. So that, so the, the short term would be submitting an article requesting funding for the housing production plan for the Springtown meeting, as well as the open space recreation plan. I do have another slide, but anyway, we are, we have been certified by the state. We are under safe harbor right now to September of twenty-two. So we had discussions with Jennifer Goldson Associates about getting working on the housing production plan. So that way, at least the master plan is going to be going along, but we need to make sure we're done to have a housing production plan by twenty-twenty-two. So that we're in a strong position again relative to 40B.
Yep.
But this is just a quick comment, only because you mentioned sewers again. My own, again, my opinion is that if you provide sewers into the area that you've outlined, you're further enabling 40B because they don't have to sacrifice their land to do their own septic system. So I didn't know what the approach was. When you and I have talked in the past, you said you can't control who uses it and what they're using it for once you put it in place. So I didn't know how you were going to, seems like the town would spend a lot of money only to, it, it could result in just developers creating 40B projects that now they make more money on than they would have made in the past. Am I wrong in that?
Well, it's a, see, to me, it's a two-edged sword, Gary, that you, you can't encourage mixed use development unless you've got sewers. And the risk you take is you open yourself up to 40B. I, I, you, you can't have one or the other. I mean, that, it comes as a package, I think.
Yeah.
And I, and I'll, I'll add to that, that, you know, if you were going to put 40B anywhere in town, which we need to do because we're a hundred and twenty units short now and soon to be a hundred and forty units short. Rough rough numbers, don't quote me on those. If you were going to put it anywhere in town, wouldn't you want it in town center near public transportation?
Well, yeah, except maybe uh some over on Southwood.
Yes, Southwood would be great.
Yeah, so that doesn't, you know, that Southwood, that doesn't stop. So this is, you know, so by the way, just from a, you know, practical or just realistically trying to execute the sewer project. You know, we would have to, you know, we'd have to go through the design engineering phase, permitting phase, a funding phase. So, you know, I want to, we want to get cracking on it in the sense, because we already do know that through discussions, Dunkin' Donuts is uh is very much interested in sewer. Do their project. It doesn't necessarily mean they need to do a denser development, but site flexibility. And Mr. Regiri, as well as has said the same thing. And Mr. Pasini, to a degree, has said the same thing for his property. So um you know, we still got a ways to go on the sewer, Gary. I guess I don't have all the answers.
And I agree, go as far as you can without actually implementing it and have everything in place to kick off. But if if you were just providing it to this area, I that's the problem I have in my mind. And I was hoping that Southwood, excellent comment, Walter, would have eliminated our issue around forty B. And then I would be all for putting sewers everywhere as that we possibly can around the center of town.
So two more things to think about that with Gary. Yeah, uh, one, you know, affordable housing on one A outside of the center of town and away from public transportation. Something to think about. The second thing is, is, you know, through the B one study, we've learned two things that in order to promote commercial development, you need sewer and gas in the center of town.
Okay.
So 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 we need sewer. What we need to do is figure out how to encourage the development that the town wants and needs. While discouraging the development that the town doesn't want or need.
Yes.
So I would argue that that the numbers presented to us this evening are a little light in terms of of one, attracting enticing development. And two, on density, which is needed to support these things. So one could again, think this, the second item I was getting to is if you, if the zoning changes were closer to densities that forty B allows. As of as a matter of right, then you would be enticing developers to provide development. That is in line with what the town wants and needs and not encouraging them to go all the way to forty B.
Okay, that's where I thought we were before, but again, as my my interpretation of tonight is that we're walking back some of what we had planned to do. Because we believe that the town, the townspeople wouldn't vote for it.
So so let me let me jump in one there, one more thing there. Sorry, just because I got to get it out. So what I I think what maybe we've lost in this is is that what Rich, you know, Rich started this with his his opinion of of or recommendation for how this should go forward, right? And then Josh went in and gave some numbers. So I, you know, what the the numbers that were presented in the slide are basically, maybe these words aren't the right words to use, but they're a baseline. They're 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 a baseline to start the conversation as we go forward with the various committees and towns and public here in town. It's basically saying this is a starting point, right? So as the planning board goes forward with these discussions, you know, we would need to take in the various outputs and inputs. And decide whether we need to change any of those numbers or any of those things that are presented, right? So I I think, I I think, speaking from my my own opinion of what was presented tonight, it was a. It was an analysis and a compromise from the original positions that the B one committee had, based on the discussions of the last year. Uh for the development of downtown to get to to get to a place where we could at least forward the conversation about uh zoning changes downtown. So um I guess I'll stop talking there.
No, I I I agree, and and I I sat in on a lot of the B one committee meetings. And I I heard the reaction of the people in the room. And I I I'm I'm sorry, in a sense, that it turned the way that it did. I I did not expect that to occur, that just a half a dozen people that have been part of this, in a sense, for the past few years. And have attended many of the meetings, even even the early meetings that Josh presented at the school. I I I was taken back that they said this isn't going to go anywhere and the town isn't going to vote for this. And in my mind, I'm I'm always just struggling, as Walter said, I'm trying to solve the forty B equation. And maybe I'm overpowered by that all the time when I see changes and I'm saying it's not enough to to sway things away from forty B. So it it's a good starting point, and I don't have a problem with it at all. And my only my only reservation was when you were talking about, maybe it was the midterm plan around sewers. That I that cautioned me that if there wasn't enough enticement to go to, whether it's forty R or the increased density that you're providing. That the sewers might make that an attractive option for forty B. And I that's where my concern was, but I'm okay with the changes. The changes are still a step in the right direction. They weren't as big a step as we as we thought we were going to get through the first time. And I'll stop talking now.
Well, let's see, Rich has proposed a a process, if you will, which is different than what has been going on in the past relative to the B one. The process that, as I understand it, is let's take the fruits of the work of the B one committee as presented here tonight. As a point of departure and bring the discussion to the planning board and let us look at all of those items and say, we agree or we disagree. And if we disagree, let's rework them till we do agree. And then reach out to other boards and and committees in town and fill them in on what we're thinking. Prior to making a couple of three, however many required zoning changes recommended to the town meeting. And in the meantime, in parallel, Rich is working on the the sewer stuff. And hopefully, we found some developer in the center of town who owns a piece of property, who would be willing to work with us in a forty R. And in parallel with all of that, we've got three other long term things initiated, a housing production plan, a master plan. And I'm drawing a blank on the third one.
Open space.
There you go, open, yeah. So I think I think the process that's being proposed is is okay, and I'm I'm all right with it. I'm ready to devote some time to wrestling with these issues and preparing some zoning changes in the short term. Over the next little bit of time, maybe we can hit the spring town meeting. If not, we'll certainly hit the fall town meeting.
Okay.
But that's just me. I I'm open to other suggestions or other comments or other points of view.
I already said I was going to stop talking.
Okay, all right. Rich, anything else you want to say? Or Josh, anything else you want to say?
No, I think we'll take take the take a nod. Is this the is a good path forward? And then what I would like to do is then we'll work a development for the next meeting in December, a package, a little more discussion of which ones to discuss at the next meeting.
Okay.
Walter, I've got some closing comments. Just a just a reminder of some things that were said during the B one committee. And I think just sort of planning concepts, you know, I I think we got a little hung up and we the planning board sometimes does, the B one committee certainly did. In what I'll call designing the future of the town, right? We're not, we're not designing a building. We're not designing a collection of buildings. We're not dictating exactly what's going to happen. That's not the purpose of planning. Planning is setting guidelines and boundaries and allowing development to work within in those those boundaries and guidelines. So I I just encourage us as we go forward to remember that this isn't a one year, a two year, a three year plan. And it's a five, ten, fifteen year plan. And the zoning changes should be broad enough and long term enough to span that period of time. And we shouldn't handcuff ourselves by thinking it's a one, two, or three year process, right? The one, two, or three year process is done either through the forty R work or through negotiations with a single developer, you know, that that the town can take on. But to to go through zoning changes, the process it's going to take to get them approved by the town for a one, two, or three year process or for a single site. Uh to act as a as a catalyst, I I think is short sighted. So I mean, I again, I I mentioned it last time we talked, I think both of those things can happen at the same time. They can support each other and and they can and they can coexist. But I I think, I I really think the planning and zoning changes need to be considered on a longer term prospect, not a shorter term prospect.
Okay, thank you, Eric. All right, are we ready to move on to the next topic on the agenda?
Yes. Thank thanks.
All right, thank you, Josh. Appreciate your input. Can we have a copy of what you've got presented tonight?
Yes, I believe Rich has it already.
I thought I already emailed to everybody. If not, I'll double check.
Well, I haven't checked my email the last couple of hours, so you're probably right.
Okay, I'll I'll send it again.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Josh.
Appreciate your help. Our next item of business is a vote to rescind release of lot twelve of of twelve area lane, which is lot five, Mill River Heights subdivision. Rich, you want to talk to to us about this?
Sure, if you recall, there was Ariana Way. There was, as the development was working towards completion and developing the remaining lots, looking through the files. It was discovered that we didn't have any security in place for insurance that all the plans and specifications of development will be followed. There is, actually, at this point, there's only one lot left to be sold. And the the owner of the lot, Mr. Di Martino, which owns the subdivision, agreed to put that under covenant, at least for now. He actually, in the meantime, between February, we talked about having a a security uh performance bond put in place for the remaining items left on the punch list. He actually went ahead and did more of the work in there. He put the top coat on the sidewalk. He put the granite curving, the entrance. He did some of the cleanup work in the detention base and and the swale that was already there. This is really to have some security in place, for which we don't have any in place right now. If everything goes true to plan, the two lots, the owners of them are intending to apply for building permits to build houses within next year. And uh once the heavy construction is done, he wants to finish the subdivision and be done with it, he gets accepted as a town road. So he is agreeable to put in this.
This is his his equivalent to our request for a bond, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And he's willing to do this.
Correct.
Seems acceptable.
That's acceptable then, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Comments from board members? No, all right. Then Chair will entertain a motion to rescind the, I think that's the correct terminology. We got into that earlier. The release of of lot five, Ariana Lane, Mill River Heights subdivision.
So moved.
Do we have, all right, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this point? Hearing none, then we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Weddell.
I.
Mr. Searle.
I.
Mr. Hunt. Mr. Peck. Mr. Hunt, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I, yes.
Mr. Peck.
I.
And Chair votes aye. All right, next item of business, approved condominium master deeds for twenty nine Valley Street, lots two and three. Rich, you want to talk to us about that, please?
Yeah, so this is really just an administrative function. One of the conditions of the special permit was to approve the homeowners association documents. And uh there's a, how many? I'm trying to think, was it eight in total between the two lots?
What are we approving language?
Yeah, it's already, so it's it's kind of post facto, I guess. I'd say it's already been done. I did review the association and the and the requirements within the P M L D as far as enforcement protection, leverage, security. Have been addressed in the in the condominium trust documents and the deed, the master deed that is on record. I think just as a point of maybe consideration, if P M L D continues to exist in Norfolk and we have future. Situations where that comes into play, I think we might want to have a sequencing when these things need to be in place. The permit was kind of silent, so this is at the end. So all these units are bought and sold off and have occupancy permits. This is really kind of after the fact, to be honest about it, which, again, it it doesn't specify necessarily in the bylaw, but it's probably worth. Giving consideration in the future on that.
But the the actual document itself, you've you've reviewed it.
It's on record, the Norfolk registry deed.
Yeah, okay.
Any need for legal review?
Yeah, I was going to ask you the same question.
Honestly, probably not at this point. It's kind of uh kind of water under the bridge, so to speak.
All right, so what's required of us?
Well, I mean, there's a reason why it's requested, right? It's requested so that we know that the property is going to be taken care of.
Yes.
Right, so as long as the the deed, as long as the guidelines say that the property is going to be taken care of, then I guess in general, our concerns are addressed, right? So.
Right, yes.
Does it serve that purpose?
It does, yes.
So what's requested of us this evening, Rich?
Just to bless these.
Which requires a motion to that effect, right?
Right.
I'd I'd like to see it. I don't think we have it, do we?
Yeah, have you?
I'm not going to approve it if I haven't seen it.
Yeah.
And I haven't seen it, so I'm not going to vote to approve it tonight.
It wasn't in our packet.
It wasn't yet?
No.
No, it wasn't, no.
I don't think we've ever done this before.
I don't recall doing it before either, John, but.
Is there master deed for the condo association, which is required?
Yeah.
If we're going to look at one thing, we should look at another, and I think that's more town council thing.
I will apologize. I thought we already forwarded the documents to you to to look at. Well.
I haven't seen it.
All right, then I'll defer to December meeting then.
Okay. In the meantime, will you will you test the issue of whether it really ought to have a council review?
Sure.
Okay. Uh next item is approved meeting minutes for our October thirteenth meeting. I've read them. I only had one typo. I hadn't got a chance to say this to Betsy, but Betsy's there. So um on page four, there's a typo on the first line of a comment about Betsy Whitney's letter.
I see it.
Okay. Gary, you want to make a motion to?
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the planning board, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty meeting as amended.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Weddell?
I.
Mr. Searle?
I.
Mr. Hunt?
I.
And Mr. Peck?
I.
Chair votes aye. All right, we have those. Next is town planner updates.
Sorry, Walter, do we, the other minutes were circulated. I didn't know. I did review those as well, the executive. The executive session minutes, did we need to approve those as part of our meeting?
Good question. Probably we do, yeah.
I will make a motion to accept the October twentieth, two thousand twenty executive session minutes. As amended.
Were there amendments made to that?
One minor. I think it's a typo.
Okay, I got you. All right.
You received those?
Yeah, I remember receive. I've read them. I've got a copy here.
Yeah, we got them.
If, if you have further amendments, it'll still fit the motion, just forward it to Betsy.
Yep, understood.
Second.
Okay. Voice vote, Mr. Wendell?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, okay. Aaron, didn't you get the executive session?
I, I did, but I wasn't at the meeting, Walter.
Oh, fair enough, yeah, fair enough, right, okay. Okay. Let's see, town planner updates. Rich, what do you want to say?
The only thing quick is that. As far as the wastewater, we'll have probably, once I get some information back from the engineers, we'll set up a meeting. To go through the initial findings, so.
Yeah.
Just to pay maybe. For Christmas. Time.
Yep.
December.
All right, one thing you and I touched on very briefly on a phone call earlier. Just update the board, please, on, on the video review of the Toils End Road Stormwater Camera.
Oh, sure. Just briefly, I had reached out to Pulte to have their consultant who worked. With them to come up with the fixes and then. Meet with us to go over the, the different areas, what we saw in the video that perhaps. We need further explanation, whether there's a concern or not concerned. And I said to John Engdahl from Pulte, could you? You know, canvas between the, what you think. Your opinion about it and then we can compare against. As a long story short, Phil Paradas from Betas going through the. The previous videos and the video from the fix is going to prepare a, a report. And then we're going to convene to meet, to go over those afterwards, so.
Okay.
Well, stay tuned.
You're keeping us in suspense. Is there any, any further deterioration?
So there's things.
I think you gave a percentage response before. I'm not sure.
Yeah, so there's things that. Don't look too good, but. But I'm also looking at a camera that's zooming in on a crack, so I don't know if that crack is, you know. A hair crack or significant crack and, and so. So Phil is going to identify all the areas, said, hey, what about this? And then we're going to go through that with him for. An explanation and see what their response is, because like I said, there's. There's, they did that chemical pack. It's like. You know, stuff that's hanging and that's supposed to be hanging in there, you know.
But nothing is so, I, I guess the.
That's good, right?
So you're looking at a crack in the wall, that means nothing collapsed. You're looking sideways instead of just down the tunnel. So that part sounds good.
Yeah, it's more, it's more at the joints where the pipe comes together. And so there's the different colorations there. Is that an outcome of the, that chemical pack or is that something we should be concerned of? So it's those kind of things that, so we're really trying to narrow down. If you will, to have, start the conversation and then get to an endpoint, so. So they're paying beta to do the work that I thought maybe they could have kind of helped a little bit. But that's fine, is what it is, right?
But Phil's going to, Phil's doing it himself, the analysis foot by foot, going through the pipes. Comparing old videos?
Yeah, so I had, he has the original videos and he has the repair. And I said to him, identify every area that you have a question of. So we were good, we had questions, he had questions. He wanted them to do it, so now we're just going to put them in writing and say, hey, what's up with this? And, and so, and they're going to have to. It's, you know, I thought they. Try to streamline it to make it a little bit, whatever, but. So.
Okay, any other items for tonight's business?
Not tonight, we have town meeting next week.
Yep.
November seventeenth, there's really only, there's only one item, Silver Fox Road. Keep plugging away. You probably saw the request for volunteers. Betsy sent the email out. It's been advertised on the town website and pushed out to Facebook.
Yep.
Try some recruitment.
I just, and I don't know if anybody's read it yet, but in terms of open space planning, you know, there's a, there's a proposal for some land at Pond Street. That the board should be aware of if they're not.
Yeah, forty-three acres, right?
Yes, I'm on CPC, so if you need to, I could, I, I guess Cindy's putting. A warrant together that will go into the town as well, same meeting. It's a land from the state, it's land that was from the correctional facility. I, I think. The, you can't beat the price, even though the warrant says a hundred thousand dollars, the land's actually being purchased for. I thought it was like seventeen, it's, it's a few hundred dollars an acre, it's something totally ridiculous. And, and some of it's wet, but the intent is to put, to use it to actually put trails. They had looked at, I'm trying to think of, the guy's last name is Rigdon. He's a young guy, works for the recreational.
Will.
Will.
Will, yes, thank you, but he's also on CPC, so he's the one that spoke to it and he will, I think he'll be presenting the warrant at the town meeting. They had previously looked at purchasing five acres to try and expand and put another field or something. That never went through. This seems like it's going through and we were always interested in acquiring land at such a low cost. So even though it's not half of its wet, it's less than that, maybe it's like one-third, but it's still great. And the, the intent is to put trails around it, walking trails, so more people could use the recreational area as well, so. There's a little bit of issue. I, I won't say that topography is a problem. It's a problem for a field. Because there's, you know, there's some slope to it, but if they wanted to expand and put another field in, they'd have to do a little bit of leveling here and there. There's an awful lot of restrictions when you buy property like this from. The state or from the correctional institution, because. This, you can only put certain types of buildings. You can't really run a business, you can't resell it, so there's, there's a lot of restrictions, but it's perfect for recreational use. In any case, it's a great acquisition. The warrant's being written for a hundred thousand dollars, even though the land is about seventeen, just has to do with. They have to do, go out and, and survey the property and find the actual boundaries and stuff. They have to do some legal work, some filing, things of that nature, but yeah, I, I think they put it in for a hundred thousand dollars. Each time they request money through a warrant, there's a disclaimer, like the last paragraph says something like, any funds that aren't used. Get automatically transferred back into CPC funding. And within a year or something, so. That's my story, I'm sticking to it.
Is there intent to, to expand the fields, at least by one field? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that was the original reason they were buying five acres at one time and that's all that the state wanted to sell. Now they've gone and they kept kind of playing with this. I think Will had an issue around. What five acres to buy and what he could do with it. They went out there, they spent a lot of time trying to figure out something to do. And it's, it's just been sitting there. They never really paid the money for it. I think they appropriated the money for it. And then they never went through with the acquisition, so in the meantime, they started looking at the larger parcel, of which the five would have been a piece. And they settled on buying all forty-three acres, which is good.
Need more to work with.
Yeah, yeah, and having trails over there, I think is great, so it works out well.
Agreed, right? Okay, any last items? All right, then Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second? Okay. Mr. Wellington?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, folks.